February 27, 2018. We'll begin by calling this meeting to order and standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we'll read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. And with that, we are in our public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our Student Advisory Council. Hi.
Hello. So, some updates from the high school. So, the winter play Anatomy of Grey is going to begin on this Thursday, March 1st, and will also be running the next Thursday, March 8th. There's going to be a student leadership meeting at the high school this Thursday at 7:00 a.m. in the Savings Bank Theater for high school student leaders to discuss school culture with the administration. This meeting specifically will focus on school safety policies. This Friday night is going to be the freshman/sophomore hop. Dance contracts are currently available for purchase in the main office of the high school, while tickets are available for purchase at lunch, and dance contracts are just available in the high school. It will run from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. in the cafeteria. This Wednesday, March 7th, or next Wednesday, will be a half-day for professional development. The block order at the high school will be CAG, and lunch will be served. And this Friday, last block, seniors at the high school will have an informative assembly to discuss prom and after-prom activities, including the post-party at Dave &amp; Buster's.
Next Friday, March 9th, seniors will have an assembly last block to hear from Wakefield Memorial High School Hall of Fame inductees, including Dr. Smith. There'll be a dinner to celebrate the alumni that night. The senior show will premiere Friday, March 9th, and will run that night and Saturday, March 10th. It'll be held at the Galvin, and tickets will be put on sale at the end of the week. The SAT will be administered at Wakefield High School on March 10th, and also on the 10th, Parent University will be held at the Galvin Middle School that morning. And then, the girls varsity basketball team won their first round playoff game last night, and they will play again either Friday or Saturday this week.
Thank you. Anything for Student Advisory Council?
I did have one question.
Mr. Callanan.
On the Dave &amp; Buster's thing, are kids just kind of still learning about that, or does everybody seem to have all the information out there?
It seems that kids have most of the information about it by now.
Okay. Being well-received, or mixed?
There's still some adjustment to go through, but I think ultimately, it will turn out to be for the best.
Very diplomatic.
Yeah. Mr. Leackel. So, one question, the school play that you mentioned, is that going to be Wakefield High School's play for the High School Drama Festival in the spring?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay. And then, my second question is, were either one of you part of the group that worked on the legislative effort to advance the civic education bill? Were you part of that?
Yes.
Amanda, where does that stand now?
The bill is through committee, and I think it's being considered by the House and Senate right now.
Great. I don't know if everybody on the committee knows about this, but it's pretty remarkable. Maybe next time you come in, we could talk about what that process was like. I think it's really remarkable how the students helped advance a piece of legislation, and in the process, advancing civic education. It's great stuff.
Thanks. Absolutely. All right, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda, we have a motion.
Move the school committee.
Is there a mo— So, we just need a motion to approve the minutes from the February 6th special meeting and the minutes from the February 13th regular meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded at discussion. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, nothing under chairman's comments tonight, so I will turn it directly over to Dr. Smith.
Okay, so, this evening, we're going to move to share with you the FY19 Recommended School Department budget. Mr. Stapleton, should I take the clicker? It's not working.
You're not wrong.
Okay, so, okay, all right, so I'm going to be doing a little bit of live monitoring, because I don't—monitoring us live on the web here. Okay, so, the first slide is really a slide that just shows a quote that I spotted in the Boston Globe that I thought was—it was in an article about Maureen Butt of the Board of Selectmen, and it was a wonderful article about her, but on February 4th, there was a quote that said, "Started with strong schools, a walkable downtown, and many social and recreation programs have attracted young families from across greater Boston and around the world." And I thought it was just really wonderful that, as people are describing Wakefield, the first phrase is "strong schools," and they're strong schools because of the support that this community has put behind the school district, particularly in the last five years or so. So, going on, as you know, the budget has really developed around our core values, our vision, our mission, and our strategy, and Mr. Taro just read those. And the next three slides are really just those major buckets: quality teaching, rigorous curriculum, and individualized student learning. And I don't need to go through the detail of those, because I think you know them well, but I did, in the presentation, just highlight for you that some of the—really, the budget priorities that emerged this year were around high-leverage instructional practices, standard-aligned common curriculum, digital tools to enrich and personalize learning, whole-child development, and meeting the diverse academic and social-emotional needs of our students. So, those are some key areas that really emerged from our strategy in the process. The next slide is really about asking the question, are our investments making a difference? Since 2015, the community's really supported, you know, financially and in many other ways, the school department in really making, you know, some strides, and so I captured here a few highlights of student performance outcomes, because that's really where you can see, are these investments making a difference? And the first note, I picked out some neat little data points. One is that our 7th grade students scored the third-highest growth percentile in the Middlesex League, only behind Winchester and Lexington, which is very impressive. Wakefield High School, as you know, achieved a Level 1 accountability rating this year, the fourth school in Wakefield to achieve this honor in the past two years, and Wakefield High School joins Lexington, Winchester, Melrose, and Arlington as the only Level 1 high schools in the 12-member Middlesex League. Wakefield Memorial High School also scored the second-highest performance level and the third-highest growth percentile in the entire Middlesex League. So, it's all some great news, kind of showing what some of the work that we have done is really beginning to make a difference. So, on our next slide, we look at the budget development process. I think last meeting, two weeks ago, I talked a little bit about what happened in December and in January, a lot of the collaboration of the School Committee Finance and Facility Subcommittee with the Finance Committee liaisons and town administrator, and a lot of the work that we have done. But since the last time I saw all of you, myself, Mike Piffeling, and Doug Lyons, and Chris Callanan, sat with the full Finance Committee on February 15th—I notice there's an error in my slide here—February 15th, and we sat for a couple of hours, and we really collaborated around what we discussed last meeting, which was sort of that Option A model and that Option B model, and how should we try to move forward with the budget. So, I have a lot to report back to you on that tonight, but it was a really productive opportunity and collaboration. Moving forward, I shared with you in your packet a graph of the input that I received from all of our stakeholders. Just shy of 300 staff and parents took the budget survey. I used a stacked graph this year, rather, to show you that the blue indicated our educators, and the red indicated members of the community. And maybe I'll just note what those high points were—you may have noticed them when you took a look at them in your packet. The top vote-getter were basically to put money toward intervention services for students that need them, and that really as a district, really looking at where can we put money to support kids who might be struggling, either academically or socially, emotionally, behaviorally. The second-highest vote-getter was around social-emotional learning, and the third-highest was around reading specialist support. So, you note that those top three vote-getters are kind of all-around meeting student needs individually and differentiated. The fourth top vote-getter was to continue to reduce the extracurricular activity fees. I think that still is a priority in this community to try to make those important activities affordable for families. And then, the fifth was the world language curriculum purchase, to really shore up that aspect, and it's great timing, because this year is the year that we will be coming forward soon with our purchases of world language curriculum, which we're really excited about. So, those are the top five vote-getters. Then, moving on from there, the next piece is around, so how did we make space for some of the priority additions in the budget? In a number of sessions, Mr. Piffeling, myself, members of my leadership team, conversations with the School Committee Subcommittee, really worked to kind of do a budget scrub, like some real analysis around where we are, where we might do some reorganization, reallocation, how we might offset some expenses, where can we cut. And you'll note that—I've noted here that overall, with reorganization, retirements, and cuts, we were able to trim by 4.0 FTE. We did make some cuts across supplies and maintenance and utility lines, and we really utilized grants and other opportunities, like our Leslie University partnership, to offset some of the priority adds that we wanted to make. And then, moving on, on the next slide, I talk about our priority additions, and a little later in the presentation, I'll talk specifically about what they are, but here, really, just kind of philosophically, what we're trying to do, and there's really just a few things. One, continue our focus on providing high-quality instruction and standards-aligned common curriculum for all students. There was 1.0 FTE involved in that. To address the need for highly-qualified specialized personnel to provide students with individualized academic and social-emotional health services, and that was a combination of an FTE and contracted services line. Next, to value the arts as an integral experience in the whole-child development, and there's a .4 FTE associated with that. So, as you see, we kind of cut 4.0 FTE, and the add-backs are 2.4 full-time employees. And then, next, to signify our commitment to extracurricular activities and experiences by implementing a second year of reductions of activity fees for students. And then, finally, to strengthen our K-12 library-media centers with more current digital print and print publications, resources, and innovative makerspaces. So, that's kind of where our priorities lie, and I'll get to the details shortly. In regard to the activity fees, I just, you know, showed the committee again what Phase 1 looked like a year ago in FY18, and the reductions that we were able to make, and then this year in FY19. In this recommended budget, Phase 2 would be to reduce by about another 20%. Basically, we ended up making the 20% cut, and then to get some kind of little bit of cleaner numbers, we rounded up to the nearest $5, and it kind of gave us a nice, clean look to our activity fees. So, the one that was originally $275 two years ago would be $175, so that's what we're looking at right now. The original $150 activity fee would now be $100, and the one that was originally $50 would now be $35. So, $175, $135, which is really a much more affordable situation for our families. So, kind of getting into a little bit more of the details of the money and the increase and decrease from FY18, I really chunked it out into three major budget areas. And the first is personnel costs. That's a good, you know, 80%, a little bit more than 80% of the budget, of course, is in personnel. Secondly, the operational costs of the system. And then, the third, which has been really an important part of the FY18 budget discussion and continues to be in FY19, are special education out-of-district tuitions. And the reason those are an important talking point in FY18 and 19 is because of the unpredictable costs that we faced recently, and the fact that the state has not been meeting its funding obligation. So, to look at those a little more closely, the next slide is just personnel and the increase and decrease from FY18. And you'll note that between contractual obligations, new and removed positions, retirements that we anticipate within the budget, the kind of total add is 3.91%. Moving forward to operational costs, increase/decrease from FY18, you'll see a list of what that looks like. You'll notice that the top two additions are really around contracted services, and that would be, again, in the area of intervention services for children, and then also in instructional supplies and instructional technology. Those are kind of the bigger add pieces. And then, if you look at where we made some cuts, or the decreases, homeless transportation, we were able to cut an additional $10,000 this year, just based on our data points, and we were able to reduce our utilities line as well. We're doing quite well there. So, in total, the operational costs, the increase in that line would be .21%. So, at that point, you'll note that the personnel area and the operational cost area, when you look at that, you know, that part of the budget, we're really pretty close to that 4% mark that we were aiming for as we worked through that budget process. The third big bucket is the special education out-of-district tuition and the increase from FY18. And I went over a lot of this last week, so I'm not going to go over that in detail again this week, but just a reminder that our total cost of special education in FY18 for these out-of-district schools was $4.254 million, and our circuit breaker reimbursement came in at about $1.365 million, and that was based on the fact that our district only received 65% reimbursement this year, and the state did not meet its legal obligation to fund us at 75%, meaning that we received $210,000 less than expected. So, that really made this year challenging in regard to managing our budget, which we have done, but it included 11 unanticipated student placements, as you might recall from our conversation two weeks ago, and a cost of $690,000 that was really unanticipated in FY18 for placements and other services that students needed in special education. So, translating this to what does this mean for FY19, as I mentioned two years ago, it really means that we have an additional over $500,000 that we need to put into the FY19 budget. The number I have listed here is 573,199. The reason it's a little bit different than that $690,000 mark from a year ago is because, you know, students kind of move in, move out, age in, age out, so there's some fluidity. But really, the total cost or increase that we will need to account for in FY19 is $573,119, which we have to add that 1.42% to the bottom line in regard to increase. So, the next page is just the summary, then, of the increase and decrease by area location, with personnel at 3.91%, operational costs at .21%, and special education out-of-district tuitions at that additional 1.42%. We come to a net total of a little over $2 million, which equates to a 5.54% increase over the FY18 budget. So, this is where we kind of get back to, that Option A versus Option B. So, as you know, last—two weeks ago, I presented, you know, there's kind of two ways we could maneuver through this and work with it, and at the end of the day, the two options are the same amount of money, and I think we were pretty clear about that. It's just like, what is the approach we want to take? And in the meeting with our counterparts in the Finance Committee, you know, we really—I think after a lengthy meeting, and I welcome, you know, Mike, or Chris, or Doug to kind of weigh in on this as well, but I think we all really reached a consensus that, you know, that this kind of idea of this Option B, which was sort of an innovative approach, while it was really—I think it was really well-received, that we were working so hard to meet the needs of everyone, that it really probably, in the end, really presented risks and challenges of utilizing that stabilization account so frequently that maybe in the end wouldn't be worth it. And also, the next slide, if we don't mind pulling that up, is sort of the whole general education, special education conversation, and I think I mentioned this two weeks ago, too. When we start talking about some of these numbers, what we don't want to do is kind of, you know, pit special education and general education against one another. They're all our kids, you know, we support all kids, and when we're looking at what's equitable, you know, what one student needs is different than what another student needs. And at the end of the day, every student should get what they need to be able to access their education and be successful. So, I included that kind of picture, which really, I think, captures that well, and we had a nice discussion about that at Finance Committee, too, and I think everyone was on the same page. We want to support all of our children, and at the end of the day, we really landed in that consensus that perhaps, at the end of the day, that Option A is the way to go. Put, you know, let's have it all in one bucket, let's manage it, you know, and I was really appreciative of that feedback. So, that's why—that is what I am recommending today. So, then, just to get into a little bit more detail about what exactly are those budget priority adds, you know, I'm really pleased to kind of talk through them, because I think they all, you know, while each one, you know, it's really not a lot of additions, each one has a lot of meaning and will really add quality to what we're doing. So, the social studies curriculum coordinator, as you know, this is the final piece of that curriculum and instructional coaching model. We began building that framework in 2015 with literacy and math coaches, and then we started building the ELA Math, Science, World Language, and Social Studies team. This will be that last piece, the social studies, and as well as the Visual and Performing Arts and Health and Wellness Director positions. So, with this framework in place, I am really, really excited about the future of curriculum instruction in the Wakefield Public Schools. We've got really an outstanding group of leaders. I often refer to them as our dream team, and they are able to coach and lead and really connect our work, not only horizontally, but even more importantly vertically, across the Wakefield Public Schools. So, I'm very excited about that. I also, as you know, social studies is on the docket for our curriculum review in 2018/19, which is why I kind of paced this add with the review cycle that was approved by this committee a few years ago. And then, it also coincides with the state revision of the curriculum frameworks, and we're all excited about the fact that we're adding civics content at every grade level, and including a civics course in Grade 8. So, this social studies curriculum coordinator will help us navigate that, lead the work, and help us to be successful in Wakefield. The second—yes?
Just quickly, is there any plan that you know of to have an MCAS-type assessment for social studies at some point?
So, that conversation is still happening. I don't, at this point, have a solid answer or a solid date on that, but it's certainly part of—it has re-entered that conversation again, especially with the new framework.
Okay.
So, and when we get there, that will also be an important piece of this person's role, is to really help us prepare for that.
Right.
So, thank you. And, you know, I'm rattling through this presentation to kind of get through it, but if anyone wants to ask me a question along the way, of course, thank you for just jumping in, and then hopefully plenty of time for additional questions at the end as well. And then, in that kind of second, in the next slide, you know, you just talk about the ways that this budget helps us to meet the diverse academic and social-emotional needs of students. I've been able to add here a .5 moderate-special-needs teacher at the K-44 level, and add to that District Intervention Services line, which is a K-12 line, which will help us acquire those highly-qualified specialized personnel that will provide students with what they need, and also helps them stay right here in district with us in Wakefield and to be successful in the Wakefield Public Schools. As you, you know, may have noted in the budget input survey, those were two of the top three vote-getters, so I think these are important adds for everyone. And the—
Yes.
Invited us to ask questions as you go through.
Yes, of course.
I think I know the answer to this, but so, is this the second bullet point, is that a stable of experts from whom you can pick and choose as needed?
Right. So, this is really kind of that sort of triage of critical response opportunities that gives us the flexibility throughout the year to use this contracted services line to bring in the kind of help we need at the age level we need it, at the school that we need it, at the time we need it. And it can, you know, by having this District Intervention Services line, it gives us the flexibility from month to month, year to year, to bring in those experts that we need. That's exactly what it is. And I think at the state of the schools, I think we all—those of us who were there heard a lot about that need, whether it's reading services, specialized reading instructors, whether it is, you know, someone in the, you know, behavior or school psychologist realm. Could be really any of those things. So, that next is some additional nursing with a .5 FTE at Wakefield Memorial High School. You'll also note that social-emotional health is in the top three of the budget survey, and one of the things that has become exceedingly clear this year is that our nurses attend to those rising social-emotional health needs daily. They're a critical part of that. And we have an increase in the number of students in the Wakefield Public Schools with life-threatening allergies, diabetes, seizure disorders, and our nursing is required at each school and on off-site field trips. So, we've really been stressed at Wakefield High School in particular. Our nurse often tends to multiple issues or emergencies simultaneously. It really is not sufficient to have one nurse alone in a building this size. And, as you know, the nurse is implementing new substance abuse screening protocols for 250 to 300 students a year, and this is a state mandate and something that our nurse is navigating, and of course, doing it very well, but it's just added that additional stress. And so, on many of these, I would have loved to, for example, for a nurse, I would have loved to get to a 1.0 FTE. I wasn't quite able to make that from a financial standpoint, but I even think with that .5, we should be able to support the busiest hours of the day. You know, my best guess is sort of that 10:00 a.m., 1:00 p.m., but it could be—I'll let the nurse tell us what that time is, what that data says, where we need the most urgent assistance. On the next slide, whole-child development. You heard me mention earlier, and one of the additions is a .4 art teacher. You heard Mr. Bankard a couple of weeks ago talk about this, and I've been hearing quite a bit about it for the last couple of years, that we have approximately 60 students who have been unable to take Studio Art I at Wakefield High School, and it's really due to the limited number of staff that we have in the department. And Studio Art I is a prerequisite for all art courses that come afterward after it. So, kids are being squeezed out of taking that course that they want to take, and a .4 art teacher would be the equivalent of two sections of Studio Art I, and that would support all of the students being able to take the art courses that they really want to take, and to be able to stay on time so that they can matriculate through any of the courses that we're able to offer. As you know, we do now have a one-year fine arts requirement for the diploma, and that has only added to the overwhelming number of students who are already interested in pursuing arts courses. So, I think this is an important add for us. Art and music are also on the docket for the 2018/19 curriculum review, so I think it's good timing, and it coincides with the state revision of the mass arts curriculum frameworks, which I think, you know, also just—it's a good fit in terms of timing. And then, finally, the activity fee reduction, again, you know, if we want to budget what we value, I think all of us care a lot about our kids participating in extracurricular activities. It's a way that they are connected, and there's a lot of learning that happens in those groups and activities that you can't really find any other place. And so, I think by helping ease, you know, the strain on families' finances, to really help families not only participate, but to do so in a way that's comfortable. really help families not only participate, but to do so in a way that's comfortable for them, I think is a real win for the Wakefield public schools. And I'm really, really proud of our community for rallying together on that. And I think it, it also encourages student participation, not only in athletics and performing arts, but also art clubs, science and math clubs as well, gives them the space to do more. And then the next slide, the last add to the budget was the upgrade of the library media center, publications and resources. One of the things we do in this budget is unify our library budget as a district-wide budget, and that helps us really maximize subscriptions and databases and our costs, really streamlines the work. And I do want to say that our library media specialists are really largely responsible for this getting in because they just did such a phenomenal job, really advocating for what they need. They put in a, a rich presentation of what it could look like if we do it well and how in the end it could help save us money. So we did do that, and it will help us add some of the resources and assistive technologies needed to support that personalized learning for our high-needs populations, whether it's our English language learners, students with disabilities. It'll help us refresh aging collections, increase interactive multimedia digital collections, and add texts that are representative of our increasingly diverse student body and families. And all of our learning commons are really working on developing maker spaces to create opportunities for creativity and innovation in design for our students. So really excited about that. So, yeah?
Just a question on that set of priorities, Kim. Are any of those, some of them sound like more capital expenses, or no?
No, really, they fall, and maybe Mr. Pifflin can help out with this, but the library media specialist add falls in several different lines, but largely supplies, a little bit of professional development, right?
Yeah, there's some supplies, some contracted services with subscriptions, both electronic subscriptions and periodical subscriptions.
Okay.
So definitely not capital in those areas.
Okay.
And the maker spaces is more of a supply, consumable supply. I would not categorize that as capital.
Okay, so it's not, it's not computer technology, it's not printers, it's not construction?
Correct, it's not those things, yeah.
But even if it was printers, it would be under the, it would, the 3D printers are now under the $5,000 mark, so it wouldn't go into that category, even if there was that type of a, a product in that, in that planned structure of the new media centers. Thanks.
Thank you. And so finally, the total FY19 recommended budget is at $40 million, $28,324. I also included the governor's preliminary, chapter 70 amounts, and it looks like if this stays put, that we will have an increase of $69,760. That's what's in the governor's budget right now. So not a big increase, but, but an increase nonetheless. And, and that is it. In the last page, I always like to have a nice picture, and I included just about a year ago, this week, our Dahl Bear School was really highlighted by, you know, the visit of the late Commissioner Chester, and there's a beautiful picture of our students sharing their writing with Commissioner Chester on his visit. So that is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any other questions that come to mind, or if anyone else wants to weigh in on our collaboration with Finance Committee or anything like that, you know, welcome that.
One thing I do just want to mention tonight for, for everyone is, tonight is formerly the night that the school committee receives the proposed budget. Two weeks from tonight, on March 13th, will be our public budget hearing, and we invite everybody who, from the public who wishes to speak to come to that. And then the 27th will be when the school committee ultimately votes to, votes on the budget. And with that, if there's anything from any members, please. Mr. Callanan.
I just found that this, this, this year's process to be very smooth and transparent, that it's been good to have collaboration early on with the Finance Committee and be sure that we're all on the same page so that nobody feels surprised when the end product comes out. I think we've been very successful in achieving that. One thing, I think I, I don't think you really mentioned it, but the, the reduction in the user fees is factoring in a matching side from, from, from the Board of Selectmen's budget, so.
Thank you for, for mentioning that. Yes, this is sort of a partnership between the town and the school department, each putting in $45,000 towards this goal of reducing the activity fees. Thank you.
Right, so that, you know, if both sides have to commit to it, or it's not going to work, so, but, you know, I, there's no indication that that's not going to happen, as far as I know.
And the other thing I'd like to mention is that in addition to the Finance Committee, a critical partner, of course, is Steve Mayo. I mean, he's always so generous with his time and his feedback and his thoughtful reflection and guidance, and so he's also been a critical partner along the way.
Anything from the committee? Mr. Markham?
Thank you. I would like to also add my support on what, on what Mr. Callanan said, and congratulations to the administration and to the facilities and finance subcommittee for what, what certainly has been a transparent and, and good process, so, so congratulations for, for that work. And certainly also add in the, the support, the ongoing support, not only going back five-plus years, but certainly in the last several months of, of the town administration, that certainly our ability to continue to provide additional resources to the, to teaching and learning is only because of that, a strong partnership, so. I would also assume on the, the reduction in fees, the, the match, the $45,000, $45,000, that, that also assumes that the reduction from last year is built into the, into the base. So it's also a carry forward of last year's matching funds, and then an additional matching funds, which we should assumably anticipate becoming part of the, the base moving forward. We had the two-year plan, right, to reduce?
That's right.
So now when we're looking at FY20, obviously we'll, we'll take that up as it comes, but the, the plan was to do the $90,000 over two years. So it's good to see that that's now built into the, built into the base, so that is, that is, that is certainly, that is certainly good. I was really pleased to see the, on the library and media center, the, the pooling of those resources. I think that's a very creative way to, to handle that. So I wanted to compliment you, compliment the administration on, on that. I suppose I remain hopeful that, that we may be able to continue to support, you know, some media specialists and library specialists in the future. I appreciate there's, there's, there's only so much, but there's still a gap in the elementary schools for, 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 for media specialists. So I, I, I'm disappointed again to see that that isn't carried in, that isn't part of FY19, but I certainly appreciate the, the other realities of the decisions that you needed to make.
Before, before we leave that point, I'd like to maybe just comment on that a little bit, because I think we're in a good place in the budget and conceptually with where we want to be. The principals and Mr. Lyons and I have talked about this quite a bit. We've tried some different models over the last few years, and I think we finally landed on a model that we're really happy with and that we think will work, and that would be to have three library media specialists slash instructional technology coaches. So the library media specialists, these people are just so skilled at really coaching instructional technology, in that we've really kind of worked out that with three FTE, we can really achieve, with the two small schools sharing a person, we can really achieve a library media specialist spending lots of time in the library or in the learning commons and to be out in classrooms and to do some coaching within the schedule. So I think, we're not far off. The problem we're actually really having right now is we're having a hard time finding a qualified candidate. So right now, we have filled two of the three positions, but you'd be surprised at the challenge of finding someone with the library media certification and the amount of candidates out there. So we have not been able to fill that third role with exactly what we're looking for, and we're really hopeful that we'll be able to do that. I think it's essential that we do that for next school year, but we've struggled with that this year, actually finding an appropriate candidate. So I feel like we have a vacancy this year, but I actually think, I actually really believe this model is going to work and provide all of the needs that the schools will have. So I want to just bring some optimism to that, to that thinking.
And if I, if I may, Mr. Terrell.
I don't, I'm not a pessimist, I'm just, I'm an eternal optimist. So I don't disagree at all with the creativity in, in the approach and the, certainly the principal's ability to, to make that work in the scheduling of the day, but just getting, even using your slide on equity versus equality, we've got three positions in four schools.
Right.
So be that, be that, as it may.
And I appreciate your advocacy has been relentless for the library media special, and I appreciate it. I want to acknowledge it.
Well, consistency is, is, is value to that in some ways. One thing that we, perhaps you covered in, in greater detail at the last meeting, and I apologize if I'm bringing it back up, I could ask you to speak a little bit about enrollments and projected enrollments?
Sure. What page, what page are we on?
Page 34.
Okay.
So my particular question has more to do with potentially what may be some analysis or, as opposed to a reflection of the math. Very quickly, it looks like we're, we're seeing a, a very slight increase in enrollment, which is, which is nice, going from 3505 to 3523. But the thing that, that concerns me, or I'd like some, some commentary on, is it seems we're seeing a noticeable drop from pre-K to K, and then we see some, some optimism in, in, in backfilling the pre-K enrollment. Do we have any, do we have any either anecdotes or thoughts about the drop in pre-K, excuse me, the drop in kindergarten enrollment from, from our pre-K?
Sure, if I can make actually a couple of comments to that, Mr. Markham?
Thank you.
On, the first comment I want to make goes, on grade nine in the high school, you'll notice the number's 286 projected for next year. We might be a little high on that one because I'm, that was a carry from, from eighth grade to ninth grade, and we do typically lose a small number of students to vocational schools or other opportunities. So I did want to just point out that that may, number may not be quite as accurate. That's grade nine for 18, 19, it says 286. I would just caution that that number may be a little bit high, but.
I would agree.
Typically, you might subtract maybe 25.
So when we go to pre-K next year, that is not FTE number. Shannon over, Ms. Blacker over at the Doyle, she polled her parents during registration, and there seemed to be a desire for parents to have a three-day option or a two-day option where they, they really want the socialization. It's not about them needing full-day care five days a week, it's more about them needing some socialization skills for their children. So the parents were, were more optimistic about having some two-day and three-day programs. So that's why that number is higher next year, is that we're going to have more kids, but the FTE is going to work out the same. Same number of classrooms, same number of teachers, it's just that some kids will come three days, some kids will come two days. Instead of 20 kids coming, instead of 20 kids coming five days a week, it will be 20 kids coming two days a week and 20 kids coming three days a week, 20 different kids. So that, that really affects that, that number right there. And then, Mr. Markham, on kindergarten, I mean, it's just an influx of six numbers from one year to the next, or where's the, where was the, the?
The drop on page 34 is showing that we have system-wide 132 pre-K, which I assume is FTE, and that's fine.
Yeah.
And then the K number is showing a dramatic sort of increase. I was wondering about the optimism around that, going from 132 to 260.
Right, so pre-K is a tuition-based or special education program?
Yeah.
Where kindergarten now is full-day free tuition, free kindergarten. So we've already done the preregistrations or started registration, and we're close to 250 at this point right now, registered for next year, so we anticipate that we'll get another 10 kids between now and September 1, who will move in or, or late registering, maybe they haven't gotten the notifications or whatnot. So I don't think we're off on the 260. It could be closer to 255, but.
Well, I wasn't questioning it, I was asking about, you know, some analysis, some background of the optimism there. That's, that's good. Okay.
I think the balance of our class size that we project going into next year is, is really solid. If you look, you know, from pre-K to 12, I'm really happy with the class size. We still have some work to do with our incoming kindergarten class, and we're working on that now, but the total number of kindergarten students should lend itself to landing, you know, four, four classes at Dahl Bear, four classes at Woodville, two at Walton, and two at Greenwood. And so I think overall, we're in, we're in pretty good shape.
We, we are hitting some, some, some high, some close-to-target numbers in, in elementary classrooms with some 24s and 25s. But I love to see, I love to see all the, all of the low 20s.
That often happens in the two small schools, just as a result of the fact that, you know, you know, the district and the, the fact that there are only two classes, but.
Yep.
Mr. Callanan?
I think on the pre-K to K, I mean, at the pre-K level, it's still tuition-based, either in the public school or there are many private schools. So I think there are more options out there, non-public school, that that's why the, you're going to see more of a differential, but when it gets to kindergarten, it's, it's free, so people will go on outside, just come into the system. I don't see a big change in the K level from year to year. It's just, you're just talking with why, why so few pre-K?
It's like doubled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's the, but it's been, it's been like that, that ratio has been pretty consistent all along, and I think it's just the, the private school existence at that grade level.
Well, the other part of that is that the Doyle will only hold seven classrooms. There's just, there's just no more space over there for us to work more. I mean, there's seven full classrooms, and then there's a couple of special education, highly fragile medical need students, so those are separate, not separate, but additional classrooms on top of the seven. So there's just no more space. We probably could bring in more than 132 or 155 if you're going with some half-day programs or, or broken-up programs, if we had additional space. Not looking to grow the program, it's great, it's a nice environment over there, but if you build it, they would come.
Yeah. I have one more question, thank you. And this is a sort of a question for the superintendent or Mike or even, even Chris. Help me backfill a little bit on the option A, option B piece, that I recall a, a reading in minutes of the finance subcommittee that you folks were prepared to recommend, so-called option B, and then having further conversations, if I'm understanding correctly, with the town and town administration, that you landed in a different place? Could you sort of, sort of backfill a little bit of that, please?
I mean, I think we, we presented all options to Finance and Facilities Subcommittee, the Finance Facilities and FinCom from the, from the FinCom School, School Group. Mr. Mayo was in those conversations. We also presented to the school committee two weeks ago, was that the meeting?
Yeah.
Two weeks ago. And, and I think when we were with Finance and Facilities Subcommittee and the FinCom school representatives and Mr. Mayo, there was really a, there was really a mix around the table. And I think that a couple of, you know, people really wanted to go in a certain direction, and since it was mixed and everybody was really on the fence, they said, you know, I think option B is fine. Everybody was, was good with option B. And when we got to before the full FinCom Thursday, two Thursdays ago?
Yeah.
And explain, you know, Dr. Smith did a phenomenal job explaining the two options and how they would work. I think FinCom really just said, you know, at the end of the day, you're going to need $550,000. Do you put it into your budget, or do you, every year you go back to stabilization and look for $550,000? Ask for it at springtime, or, yeah, ask for it in the fall, draw it in the spring. They said it just seems kind of clunky, and, and there were risks involved with it. They said you need the 550 either way, you might as well just put it into the budget. And, and quite honestly, that's what I wanted all along, but I wasn't, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't going to voice my opinion, you know, we need, we need the 550, it doesn't matter where we get it, I'd rather have it as option A. And that was where I stood, but I didn't want to, you know, I certainly wanted to get the, I didn't want to put my opinion on FinCom, I wanted their feedback, and I think that's what we all want.
And they were incredibly reflective, and I think everyone was, and I think everyone could see the value in both options. And I think people saw, saw that it was really a sincere effort to kind of land somewhere near that option B, was to kind of really be attentive to that sort of 4% number that was sort of out there and kind of try to stay close to that, and, and that this was a way we might be able to do that and maybe meet some other goals. But the end of the day, I think people just said, you know, we really need to move away from that conversation, and that it really stopped working for us. I think we all looked at the complexity of the school department budget and what the special- special education piece meant in the budget, and I think everybody, I felt really confident that everyone felt comfortable that, you know what, Option A was the way to go, it just, you know, kind of pulled it all together, you know, and, and it's, and you take some of those risks involved, involved out. I felt a strong, my perception was, and a couple of members articulated, the trust that they have in us to manage and monitor kind of a complex budget that's really unlike other budgets. And so I think in the end, I think everybody at the table felt really comfortable, and then we met again as a subcommittee, and I think we felt really comfortable with it as well.
I'm sorry.
Bear in mind, that's in Com, that was a, that was an informational night, they have not yet voted.
Right.
Okay, but the, I think that they, by presenting both options, I think it highlighted much more clearly for them how much, you know, how high a percentage of our budget is not within our control, that things can just pop up out of thin air at times, if somebody moves in, or a new plan gets, has, gets put in place, and you can't, your hands are tied. And I think having this discussion, the way we had it with both options out there, really highlighted that and accentuated for them to, so they really could see it more clearly, and in the end, didn't want to have to be subject to vote this and vote, you know, it was just too many moving parts, and those present felt like they were happy to just go with it.
Well, if I may just conclude, it's certainly a compliment to the administration and the Budget Committee to have, you know, the depth of the research and the quality of the planning that went into it, as well as certainly the resourcefulness and the manner in which you presented it. You all presented it, so certainly, certainly kudos to that. And, you know, the math at the end of the day lands that whether we, you know, however, however we get it, whether it, whether it's part of the spring town meeting of the spring of eighteen or the fall of eighteen, these are certainly the needs, especially the ones under special education, the needs for children in Wakefield, and, you know, pay me now or pay me later. But I, you know, regardless of that, my glibness, the credibility of the process that was, I think, a great compliment to all involved.
Thanks, I just wanted to add.
I think the piece of the conversation I think has been very interesting and important, as well as this question of the ongoing dialogue with town meeting, right? And when I was in the conversation at the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee, I thought, and this is one of the reasons I thought Option B was preferable, because it gave us an opportunity to go back to town meeting a couple of times a year to reemphasize to the larger, you know, group of taxpayers, the very point that Chris was just making about the variability and unpredictability of some of the items in our budget. And so that was, that was what I was thinking. But on the other hand, as Kim articulated tonight, the danger of that is that, you know, we've sort of even inadvertently segregated the special education students from everybody else, and in a way, sort of, you know, separated as a spending item, and as a result, kind of working against our whole model of inclusion, even accidentally. So I think, I appreciate that part of the conversation too, because there, it's not, it's not black or white, I mean, there are advantages and disadvantages to both, but I think in the end, landed in the right place in that part of the conversation too.
And Greg, you actually bring up a great point that, you know, we talked about at that meeting, which is, I'm remembering that, you know, the FinCom Chair, Dan Sherman, said, you know, Kim, if you're able to explain the budget as Option B, if you will.
Yeah.
Like kind of explain the, you know, for the sake of the town, a town meeting, to be able to help people understand how it's put together.
Right.
While we're going, or kind of endorsing this idea of Option A, that explanation will be very helpful to people to really understand it.
Right.
I thought that was a point well taken.
Yeah.
I think that you're right, that's why we were interested in like looking at that Option B piece.
Right.
Because it sort of helped clarify and, and, you know, put the focus on, you know, understanding what was happening, so.
And, yeah.
Ms. O'Neal.
I, I initially thought Plan Option B was really the one to go to, because it really provided a lot of transparency, and I, and I'm reading some of your comments, Kim, from your meeting with FinCom, and there was exactly the fact that if you do present it in a way that shows, and I'm not sure if we want to stick with this sort of notion of a four percent as a target, but if, if we, you know, if we feel like we must, then that's a great way to sort of highlight where we're at. And not, not necessarily segregating special ed as a whole, although I suppose we could, but really the parts that are the most variable would be those out-of-district placements, which are extraordinarily expensive, necessary, of course, but unpredictable. And, and just teasing that piece out, and just really letting the folks know that this is our reality.
One, I just want to add, just came to me, but one thing that gets lost, I think, if you, if you just review this quickly, is how much progress you've made in containing costs in district, despite even a growth in the number of kids who are diagnosed on the autism spectrum, for example. And so I think that's an example of the good budgeting work that you're doing, while meeting the educational needs of the kids too. It gets lost in this because the out-of-district costs are so high and growing so fast, but one, I thought that was worth mentioning too.
And I think on the slide tonight where I mentioned the percentage of the students that are out of district, we're actually, you know, comparatively low, our percentage in Wakefield.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Smith.
I apologize if you already went through this, and if you have to get back to me, it's fine, but the three big additions besides special education, the two-point-four full-time employee, the student intervention, and the upgrade to library and media center. Do you happen to know either real dollars or percentages of each of those three, by any chance?
We do. I might need Michael's help to pull them out quickly from the budget book.
So the social studies coordinator, seventy-five thousand dollars. But we, see, it's a little, it's a little bit more in-depth than that, because we do have some, some employment changes coming. So when we say that there's a three-point-nine-one percent increase in personnel, that assumes that there will be some changes in other, in other positions, and other, possibly in social studies. So just to give you raw numbers for the two-point-four, though, that social studies curriculum coordinator, seventy-five thousand dollars. The nurse.
Point-five MSN would be.
The nurse is thirty thousand, six eighty-nine. The.
MSN would be also half of the, of an M-four.
Going to building by building here, the special education, the point-five is thirty thousand, six eighty-nine. What was the point-four, was it art teacher at the high school? I can pull that up.
It's okay if it's just rough numbers.
The art teacher at the Heights High School is twenty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars.
All right, so that equals the two-point-four.
Correct.
And then, as far as the other two, do you know?
What are they?
Student intervention, and then the upgrade to library and media.
So student intervention went from sixty to seventy-five thousand?
Yeah.
Just got to find it, I'm pulling them, it's on the top of my head, but.
Sixty-three to, sixty-three to seventy-five, maybe?
So sixties for the student intervention, right?
I don't know, less than that.
Doesn't have to be exact.
I'm going to remember where you put it. Oh, it would be in the district at the end here.
It would be, that's what I believe, yeah, that's what I'm, I'm in there right now.
All right, just give us one second, here we go. Mr. Pfeffling knows this budget better line by line.
Can I look at this one? Student intervention, sixty-seven.
Yeah, there it is, right there. Student intervention, right here. So it's.
Sixty to seventy-five, yeah, the formula didn't come over, but it's a fifteen thousand, that's what I was looking at, the increase.
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make that error, that, there's no difference, the difference didn't come over, so there's a formula break there. But it's on page fifty-three, so it's fifteen thousand dollars for that.
Okay, yeah.
And.
Library and media center upgrade.
So that is also under, on page fifty-three, there's a, you'll see that there's a contracted services, publications, and supplies, so that totals twenty-eight thousand, seven sixty-five.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Morgan.
I just wanted to thank you both for your hard work on this, and I'm really happy to hear, it sounds like most of us are landing with Option A as the better choice, or the preferred choice, yeah. As Mr. Markham said, the math netted out the same both ways, so to me, Option A was the more transparent choice, and I'm glad that that's where we're landing.
Anything else on our, Dr. Smith's recommended budget tonight?
I was going to ask one last thing, any update from Senator Lewis as far as the sixty-five versus seventy-five percent? Any feedback on that?
No, I think it's still, they're still working hard, and have you heard anything else, Michael?
Yeah, I mean, just that the governor did make some budget additions a couple of weeks ago, and circuit breaker was not one of them, which was, which was actually, I think, quite shocking, because from what I'm hearing, state revenues are up substantially.
Right.
And one of the areas that they were hoping to take care of was circuit breaker. And if somebody were to say to me, do you want the circuit breaker number or the chapter seventy money? I would always say circuit breaker, because it's a level playing field for all districts. On chapter seventy, we only get seventeen percent, and other districts get higher percentages.
Much more.
Right, so, so if they were to allocate more money to chapter seventy, that really is going to help us minimally. Where if they allocate more money to the circuit breaker, that would be where my vote would go.
Now, do you have any suggestions as far as is Senator Lewis the best bet for someone like myself to contact on a situation like this, or?
I would say absolutely.
I think from, from Wakefield, yes, correct, yeah, I think, you know, Senator Lewis, Representative Wong, and Representative Broder would both be very influential in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is Representative Wong on Ways and Means?
Yes. Okay, Dr. Smith, back to you.
Okay, so do we have to do a motion, or?
Not for the recommended budget.
No, okay. Okay, so next on my agenda is the, back to FY eighteen, a recommendation to, for the school committee to consider endorsing a warrant article for the May town meeting. I've included that in the packet, and as you know, from last meeting, we've worked hard to make up for as much as we could in the budget of the, of the six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars that, you know, was unexpected this year. But at this time, we will need to go to stabilization for a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars, and so that's the recommendation I would make tonight.
Okay, so is there a motion that the school committee sponsor, the special education stabilization fund warrant article for the May twenty-eighteen town meeting as presented tonight?
Still moved.
Motion's made in second, and any discussion, questions? Dr. Smith, anything on that?
Just thank you to Attorney Mullen for writing, drawing it up for us.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Okay, and then the last item for me is hiring ranges. So as you know, we're in the midst of hiring an elementary school principal and a high school principal. I took a look at our hiring ranges, and some of our candidates, and where we are, and really looking for just a little more flexibility in the range. I think we have not changed our ranges since twenty-fifteen or twenty-sixteen?
Not across the board. We've had one or two that we've needed to tweak.
Okay.
But because we went from salary ranges to hiring ranges, that's helped us not come back to the committee every, every year or twice a year, three times a year, looking for adjustments to those numbers, so.
So I think my, my real focus is on, you know, where we're hiring, which is an elementary school principal, specifically the Greenwood principal and the high school principal. My recommendation is just to slide the hiring range by five thousand dollars to the right, to really make sure I have a little bit of wiggle room in negotiating with candidates. But you'll see highlighted in green, we looked at the category in its entirety of all of the principals and executive team, because when you move any one piece of the puzzle, you need them kind of proportionately to stay together, you know, so that the, the space between them, if you will, stays roughly the same. So my recommendation would be to adjust those highlighted in green on your sheet, which includes all the principals and the executive team. I'm not including the superintendent unless you'd like to add something in that today, that I feel like that really is the school's committee's decision. And then you'll also note that, Michael did a nice job for me, just highlighting and read those positions that are currently filled, and the others that are just left blank or ones that we are not touching at this time, so.
Should we start with a motion, Mr. Markham?
I move the school committee approve the hiring ranges as presented.
Okay. Mr. Cannon in.
On the, how, the packet, we refer to a sped coordinator, and on the handout you gave tonight, you have sped director, is that the same position?
Two different positions, so there's these, on the, in the packet, the administrator of special education is the sped director in the packet.
All right.
It's, I, I think, and that's Ms. O'Neal's position, but I believe her actual title is Director of Special Education and Special Services or something.
So, but currently, we're out of the proposed range.
So we, this is the hiring range, no longer the salary range.
Okay.
So we, this is where we hire, and then salaries can go above the hiring range, it's just this, this is your starting point for hiring people into the district.
Okay.
That's why we don't come back every year now and say, we need to adjust everybody's, because everybody's now over the salary range.
Right.
They're, once they're on board, you, we don't.
You can go outside these.
And that was, Dr. Halloran, I think several, maybe two, three years ago, had really suggested that to the committee, and it was.
I'm not sure that the chart's clear that there's a hiring range, and we might want to just make that more clear for documentation, that's all.
And I want to thank and acknowledge Mr. Pfeffling for all the work he did in getting all of the information with our DART and surrounding and SEEM communities, just so you have a sense of where, where those, you know, salaries are at this point.
Anything else on that? Motion has been made in second, and all in favor?
Thank you.
Can I, that's, that's gone, but possibly, maybe the Labor Relations Subcommittee may want to take up the superintendent's salary range before we get to negotiations with the new, with our future superintendent, just that that's in place before negotiations, you know, and then we're rushing to get an approval on a hiring range, if it's outside of what's already there. It could fall well within, I'm not sure.
Okay. Maybe Mr. Markham, you can download with Mr. Pfeffling on that. Offline. Thank you, Mike.
And then just one comment under my other, is that Parent University is coming up on Saturday, March tenth, as one of our students mentioned, and I realize we, you know, we don't have another school committee meeting prior, prior to that. So I wanted to make sure that I mentioned we have a great event planned, and it's the fifth annual, and it's going to be fantastic, so I really encourage folks to turn out for Parent University. Thank you, Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Mr. Pfeffling, you've got gifts, but I don't think we have any tonight, am I right?
Sure.
Thank you.
All righty. Subcommittee reports, Finance and Facilities, with Mr. Cannon in.
Beat that one to death.
All right. Labor and Personnel, and also Mr. Markham, if you have any updates on the Screening Committee at this time.
Well, certainly, I just speak very briefly, that right now is the only thing that the Labor and Personnel Committee have been doing. There has not been a Labor and Personnel meeting since our last meeting, but that would really constitute the bulk of, the bulk of what's happening. So the Screening Committee is beginning its work in earnest next week with a series of, a series of meetings. Right now, we're looking at a total, or at least as far as the schedule goes, of about twelve to fourteen meetings, which would include a variety of interviews, that would constitute the bulk of those timeframes. So the Screening Committee, we're going through, landing on particular dates right now. And one thing I'd like to report on is on February fifteen, the Screening Committee held the Community Forum at the Savings Bank Theater. I would say it was fairly well-attended, there were, we didn't do a sign-in sheet of any, of any sort, but a probably reasonable guess would be maybe fifty or sixty people were there. And we had a healthy dialogue, we did not have an agenda per se, there were no formal presentations either by the, anyone from the school department or. or from the town, but we had a healthy exchange over what we, some ideas and what the community and those present would be interested in for a profile of the next superintendent and what some of the priorities of the district are, some of which were reflected in the survey the superintendent shared with us earlier, and some of which were certainly, you know, thoughts that I think people just had in mind. So it was, I thought it was a pretty robust conversation. Lots of notes were taken, and the screening committee is sharing those notes. We're going to be using that to develop the profile for some of the questions that we'll be designing and asking of each of the, of the semifinalists who will be, who will be interviewed. So that work begins in earnest next, next week. We will be conducting interviews, if all stays on schedule, the week of March 19, and then bringing, and then conducting, that'll be a week or thereabouts. Then there'll be some, some more vetting with a couple of, sort of deliberative meetings, and then presenting to this committee recommendations at the Tuesday, March 27 meeting. So actually, a month from tonight.
Excellent.
So a month from tonight, the screening committee will make its report to the, to the full, full committee, which will be per the committee's direction, which will be three finalists will be, will be recommended or to be brought forward.
Thank you, Mr. Markham. Paul Seaman planning, Ms. Fordyear.
We're hoping to meet on March 13th. Does that work for you?
I answered you.
Did you? I didn't get it.
I answered you.
Oh, okay. I forgot that I have to read your mind.
And his emails.
And the email.
I know, I didn't get any.
I did put it in writing.
Anyway, March 13th, right before our, our school committee meeting, we'll meet. We have a few things to discuss. One is a change to our wellness policy as a result of the child nutrition audit that Kim brought up. In our mask policy newsletter, there are a couple of policies I wanted to have our folks talk about. One is there's a school lunch charging policy change that I'd like to discuss, and also I'd like to talk about a policy around sort of crowdfunding, you know, by employees or, or, you know, whomever in the schools and have something in writing for that.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, so future dates and agenda items, our next meeting will be March 13th. That will be our public budget hearing that evening. School committee comments, Mr. Massey.
All set.
Ms. Morgan.
I'm all set, thank you.
Ms. Cannon in.
I'm good.
Mr. Leakos.
Just wanted to thank all the individuals who came to the forum that Mr. Markham was talking about earlier, and I thank Tom, he did a really nice job moderating the conversation. It was, it was great. Glad he was part of it.
Ms. Fordyear.
I have a few thoughts. I've been thinking a lot about the events that happened last week in Florida, and I just wanted to share a few comments. I wrote them down, so I'm going to look at my, my computer as I speak. So again, you know, these events brought, from the past week, brought to light the gun violence that some of our nation's school communities have faced. And personally, you know, my heart aches for the students and families and community members of Marjory Stonem Douglas High School. It also aches for the communities that have lived through shootings, you know, even through our early months of 2018, and for those schools that have experienced gun violence, you know, as early as the year 2000 and of course even before then. And I also don't want to overlook the pervasive gun violence that our urban school neighbors face. Their children, parents, caregivers, teachers, and administrators struggle daily with, with this issue. So I've been thinking, you know, what do we do when thoughts and prayers aren't enough? And I was thinking about us in Wakefield, in Wakefield Public Schools, and we move to action. Wakefield Public Schools is committed to the safety and care of all of our members. This action does mean that sometimes our schools need to stop our curricular work in order to practice drills and in the event of a threat. It means schools have to utilize all of the available security measures in order to account for every single child and every adult in our buildings. But I believe that action means more than that. It means that when a student is concerned about a message that he or she has read, the student feels that it's safe to report that message to a trusted adult, that the adults in the building will act quickly, decisively, and with great concern for everyone who's involved. I really believe that Wakefield Public Schools have balanced the need for safety and security with the need for an environment that is first and foremost a teaching and learning one. And I want to share how incredibly grateful I am to our administrators and our teachers and our principals and directors and assistants and staff, and of course, our school resource officers for managing these challenging needs. Their care and their concern and their professionalism is undeniable. As a parent, I look to my fellow parents to support these folks despite sometimes feeling scared and sometimes feeling angry about a particular situation. We want to know every detail about an incident, but because of privacy laws, due process, ongoing investigations, that information can't be shared. Our school leaders are sometimes in an impossible situation, but I urge you to trust them. Their only concern is that our children are safe and well-cared-for. So I wanted to share a couple of personal things that may not, or may or may not be reflective of any member of the community and certainly the school committee, or certainly not the school committee as a whole, but I just want to let folks know that personally, as a parent and an educator, I'll advocate for gun control. I don't believe that more guns is the answer. I believe that as a community, Commonwealth, and country, we should and must financially support mental health in the same way that we support physical health. But really, and finally, I believe that we have to continue to circle our arms around our community's children because they're our children, and they should feel the love and the support for our community first. Thank you for letting me share this. Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Fordyear. Mr. Markham.
Having the opportunity to follow what Ms. Fordyear just said, let me say incredibly well said and here, here. All set, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markham.
So I just want to take, take a brief minute tonight and just share with the community a personal decision that I've made recently, which is that I will not be seeking reelection to the Wakefield School Committee. It is not because I have not immensely enjoyed every day and every moment in sitting around this table. In my mind, it's, it's because the same passion that led me to, to originally run for school committee is now leading me back to pursuing my own education. And I feel strongly that the next person who sits here in April, that Wakefield deserves that person be fully committed and fully prepared and fully present for a strong, committed, dedicated three years. And that person at this time is not me, but I have no doubt that that person will find their way here in April. And with that, I just offer my thanks to everyone for what has been a tremendous three years. I look forward to the next, to the next month and a half, two months. I promise that my commitment, my dedication will not be impacted whatsoever, especially given some of the important things that we have ahead of us, but I did want to share that with everyone tonight, so thank you.
And with that, I will just ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
To make a motion that we adjourn the school committee meeting, excuse me, Tuesday, February 27, 2018.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, everybody.